Okay, so everyone had a chance to review the minutes. I'll look for a motion to approve. Congratulations, I'm excited. All, thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
I.
Any votes? Okay, we'll jump right into the resolutions of the day. First one is a resolution allocating hotel or motel occupancy tax revenue and providing distribution of occupancy tax revenues for 2020. See, start with Dave, do you want to kick this off?
Yeah, sure. So, the local law that allows us to collect and use those funds hasn't been really modified in any way or even reviewed much since its implementation in the late 1980s. And it allowed for a small percentage of the funds that were collected to be used by the Treasury's office for administration. Under the current Treasurer's regime, there's been a lot more effort into making sure that everything is operating as meant under the law and that collections are provided on a timely manner. So, there's been a lot more work involved in this resolution changes the collection percentage from 2% to 4%, right?
Yeah, with the kicker, with the caveat.
And, and because there's been a lot of work and expenses incurred over the course of this past year, we're also proposing that any bed tax dollars that are collected in 2019 that are above the appropriated revenue that was adopted in this year's budget can go to the Treasurer's office to help him cover those costs.
Okay.
And, but going forward, the percentage will be 4% annually instead of 2%.
Okay, that's great. Treasurer, Kevin, would you like to?
Yes, and going forward, it'll be, it'll be done yearly. So, the discussion will happen every year. We'll be, both offices will meet probably in the middle of the year to put a target out so that we don't have to do this in December. But I do want to say that perception was reality in this case. Bob will bring you back to reality. With this process, it's not sending out 109 letters to businesses and then wait for the money to come in and putting it in a bank account for the county. This, it's a very labor, well, it's very labor intensive because you have to follow up, you have to police it. People don't pay in their calculations. Business people are very smart, so their calculation would be somewhat different than what we would watch. So, now with the policing of it last year, I think it's pretty well said, it's online now, so we don't have to mail anything. And we met with most of the business owners and answered their questions in regards to this. And what's going to happen now is hopefully it will get easier down the road and we'll make it easier with the, with the extra expense, or the extra money too. That's why I think, that's why the added incentive needs to be there because I can go back and for the money that this, the department was being paid, we could go back and send out 109 letters and do it the old way, but there needs to be incentive for this department to continually use resources to police it. So, again, that's the reality. Perception was all we did was send letters out and collected the money. And that just was not the case, so.
Great. Let me do this, let me look for a motion. I'll make it work, it's not a second. Send them out and then let's put it in discussion here. So, real quick, I'd like to thank you David, Kevin, I appreciate you guys working together. And this is, it's always fun when we're talking how to split up the extra income, right? I mean, a lot of times we spend time talking about what do we do? So, that's exciting news. I appreciate all the work that your office put into this. Just so everybody understands, this is budget neutral, it's not going to affect anything for the 2020 budget. We're just looking at a way to at least one time for this resolution, split out the extra money that's over what we budgeted even for 2019.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Should there be extra money above the projected and adopted W1 than the Treasurer's office? So, there's no, no impact on either 2019 or 2020.
Perfect. Does any legislators have a question?
So, now, was it, it has been 2% and now they all know it's going to be 4%?
Well, that's irrelevant really to the businesses. That's only internal.
It's internal, okay, that's what I misunderstood, okay.
Yeah, so 2% of what we collect went to him, now it's going to be 4%.
But the tax to the, the actual hotel tax has been.
Stays the same.
Okay.
Roy, just a quick catch-up on this one. We're on the first resolution of the day, that's the one where we're moving it from 2% to 4% of the total bed tax money will be transferred over to the Treasurer's office for the administrative fees of collecting.
Thanks, sir.
And Ed, go ahead.
I was just wondering, the additional 2% that's going to go to the Treasury, that obviously somebody else is not going to be receiving. Does it affect, you don't see that affecting any of your spending?
Well, typically because the process in the past hasn't been one that was, let's say reliable, I always.
You can comment.
I always budgeted very conservatively on the revenue side and in general, there's been a little bit of extra every year over the last 15 years and that will be pretty close to, you know, what the other 2%. So, I don't really see that it's going to impact us. I would rather, my, my practice has been to be conservative in my revenue projection so I didn't have to come back to you and say, "I ran out of money and we have expenses that I can't pay for." So, this way, you know, I'll give you a conservative revenue number and in this case, there hasn't, we believe there's going to be some extra again this year and that will cover Kevin's expenses.
Good. I just may add to that, I want to say, thank Dave for working with me on this because I actually wanted 8%. But if, I didn't bring the numbers, you know, there's a graph that David, I shared with Dave, definitely because the efficiency has shot up the numbers. So, you know, so if I'm chipping away at that 2% to 2%, there was more gain in that 2% we'll cut into, so you're not cutting into, hopefully not last year's revenue. So, it's just one of those, and I didn't bring it, I didn't, you know.
I can give it to you if you need. Thank you.
Do we foresee from the IDA or anybody that we're going to give any additional hotels in the area? Any additional rooms? I don't know, is there anything on the board of, of anything increasing out there?
The one thing that I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not on to me, Roy.
Well, let me.
Go ahead, you're probably going to say the same thing about Airbnb.
There you go. Yep.
If they're willing to pay it, we just need to get our state officials to carry it.
Right.
That's a good point.
There have been pretty steadily over the last decade conversations about another hotel or two in the county and that depends on a lot of other things happening. But I think if one were to come, this, my guess would be, probably would see it in the San Antonio corridor area before you'd see it in the Oswego city area. Part of Fulton's DRI plan talks about perhaps another hotel in or around the city of Fulton. So, it's hard to say right now, but it's something that's discussed pretty regularly.
Okay, just wondering if there was any irons in the fire?
Well, the irons in the fire, one of them is the water park that's being on edge in the motel all year. That should increase its volume because of the water park.
Yeah, what we're seeing is a lot of, thanks for working with the folks at the IDA, thanks for our own tourism side of things, you know, as, as obviously the reason to come to Oswego, Oswego County increases, more we're going to draw.
Reentry.
If the demand is there, then we're going to see folks building rooms to keep close to. So, it's exciting, it's an exciting time and I want to thank Dave's office again for the great work that went into this and again, we're talking about how to spend extra money. That's wonderful and Kevin for all the work you've done as well, thank you.
Well, it comes down to Janet and her team doing a good job of bringing people here.
So, I should have complimented my staff too, so.
Yes. All right, are there any further questions for this resolution? All in favor? Any votes? Thank you, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, wonderful.
Hold on there?
Yes, just a, your names, or anonymous at some point. All right, let's jump on to resolution two, authorizing county officials to execute documents related to funding through the Lake Ontario Resiliency Economic Development Initiative or ready. Dave, do you want to?
Yes, you had a resolution very similar to this last month. We tried to get out of this because they're really trying to make sure that this stuff happens quickly. Following your adoption of the last resolution that authorized the chairman, which is our typical process, we started getting some of the paperwork from the agencies that are administering the ready funds. And we've discovered some forms that call for the county attorney to do things and other folks, so this is just kind of a catch-all. Anybody that is required to authorize efforts or documents in order to access those funds will have that standing authorization.
No change to the amounts, no change to?
No, no, I'm just saying that if the county attorney has to certify that we own a piece of property, now he has to do that.
I'll look for a motion. Second, what, oh, Ed, second Ed. Okay, any discussion? Again, same times, you know, an extra $6 million coming in just specifically under the county's projects from the state as well as almost $28 million total in the counties. Again, take every opportunity to thank the folks who are instrumental in making sure that the state recognized our need. Looking forward to seeing these projects move in, so. Okay, then, I vote for him, I vote. All in favor?
I know I missed the last one.
All in favor? Any votes? All right, thank you. And on the three, resolution increasing authorization of capital project number 95 Mobility Management. Is this a Dave or a Phil? Actually.
Doesn't matter.
All right, thanks, Roy, that was second. All right.
So, this was a capital project authorized earlier in the year and that was set at 197 585. And since then, we have got some confirmation about the money that's available to us from the state. Also worked with Onondaga County Purchasing to go out with a proposal and the price that we got back for that work was 28540. So, in order for us to award that contract, we need to increase the amount that the capital project is authorized to spend.
And I want to know, Mal or Roy or Dave would like to speak a little bit to the importance of this position, this process, just based on, you know, the need part of it?
The mobility management, I think we've discussed this for several different meetings and how important it is for the rural county. I mean, this is a, you know, the old saying, it's a small step for this committee, but it's a huge step for rural transportation. It really is. We, we are very aware of the lack of rural transportation and the impact it's had. We've got perfect storm out there with rural roots being shortened or eliminated with Medicaid being taken away from us. So, this is a huge step towards getting these people to the right things, getting them to meetings, getting them to DSS when they need to get services, getting them to the doctors. I think it's an organized thing and we will have an actual, what I'm excited about is we have an office right here in Oswego County where they will actively go out and get volunteer drivers to be able to help these people. I think it's a big puzzle and this kind of ties all the big pieces together.
Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, it's also now required process in order to continue to receive rural transit dollars. The state, federal governments have said there needed to be better local coordination and that's basically what the mobility manager does is he understands all of the needs of the stakeholders, so the riders, the agencies and the places where those riders are going, whether it's work or doctor or training or even grocery store. They understand the need and then they also coordinate all of various providers, whether it's physical bus, it might be a taxi, it could be a volunteer driver, and they put all those pieces together to make sure it's happening and everybody's getting served at the most efficient cost. So, we couldn't continue to receive rural transit dollars without implementing this process.
The one thing I will point out that there is almost 40,000 coming from unappropriated fund balance on this one, so, you know, anytime we're looking to spend from our savings account, we really want to make sure we can justify why the need is there. I think that this is a very clearly a time when that makes perfect sense, especially when there's other monies down the road that are dependent on it.
So, we exhausted all of the possibilities. Basically, the reason this had to come from fund balance in the end is that the state is insisting it be in the capital project rather than any of our operating budgets. Otherwise, we would have been able to split out the county's portions such as DSS over two-year periods, but it's got to be an independent capital project.
Thank you. How much is that again? 40,000, 39,999. Ed?
Is there a clear breakdown as far as this budget will go through administration, where do we actually have to pay out the treasury?
So, the mobility manager is basically all administration. They, they're not a provider. They organize a provider to meet the needs of the stakeholders.
So, this is all?
Yeah, this is a two-year contract. It's a company that does a very similar process in Jefferson and I think Lewis Counties. So, it's a new process, there's not a lot of people out there doing it. As a result, we only received this one proposal, which has been a big cause in the delay of bringing this to you. This was done several months ago, but we've been trying to go through a lot of extra steps with Department of Transportation to say, "Justify to me why it's only one and why it's this cost." And so, that's taken a few extra months to go through that process.
So, it's a two-year contract, is, is that the annual cost or is it covered in both?
This is a two-year cost, you know.
Yeah, I, I, we're lucky to be able to have found the company that's already done this. You know, certainly we, the reason we created the Transportation Advisory Committee that was going to report directly to this committee was to try to turn around the death spiral that our public transportation system was in. Ever since Dave sent my letters to the state saying, "Please don't take the Medicaid transportation piece away from our ability to do that dispatch ourselves," because we were going to combine different kinds of routes. You know, so the nice thing about this company is that they have proprietary software that's kind of like Uber-like, you know, where we're going to be able to really reinvent the system based on all the resources that they have available to us under, you know, one brain trust, one dispatch, and then try to add in, as Mal said, the volunteer piece, which is kind of like a volunteer Uber. There's already, that's what PALS is in Plaski and it's already functioning. So, I said, we say it's volunteer, but they actually make, I think, like 58 cents a mile. So, but it, but it's people being able to help other people and get reimbursed for, you know, so a bunch of retired, you know, retiree taking another retiree to, you know, an appointment, being able to hang around as opposed to calling, using the Medicaid dispatch, getting a random taxi or bus from God knows where, somebody from Onondaga County to drive all the way up to Plaski and all the way back down to, you know, Onondaga County, all the way back up. God knows what that's costing the state, it's ridiculous. The state has been supportive of the idea of the, them using the volunteer piece because it saves them a ton of money. You know, you'd think they'd want to do more stuff like that. So, I'm really hoping that this is, this is going to be the turnaround that we need for, you know, what's been, you know, sad and, you know, we haven't been able to do anything about it as we watch it kind of fall apart in front of us. So, this is a huge hope, you know, we need to support them and they do well, you know, it needs to be sustainable.
Well, one thing I wanted to add about the BTS, their, their volunteer thing, from the feedback we've gotten from other people, excuse me, that have used it, they absolutely love it because they actually, they start to talk to these people as almost friends, these volunteers, much better for them, for the whole mental thing as well as.
Yeah, everything about it.
It's much better than trying to get a taxi cab or whatever. This is great feedback from ones that have used it before, so.
That's great. And, you know, going with this company, although it is the only one and, you know, obviously need to look a little closer if it's the only one, but clearly you've heard that Dave has put in the effort needed in his office to make sure that this makes sense. I don't know if down the road, Phil, you know, obviously this, we didn't maybe know necessarily that this would need to be funded from a capital project ahead of time for any sort of renewal, is that something we could maybe get out ahead of or hopefully have some money there to fund it? So, I mean, ultimately it would still come from the same source, but it would be, we'd be planning for it at least. So, Dave?
I think that going forward, as we start to access or continue to access the funds for this function from the state and federal government, the money will more closely match our need.
Sure.
This was the first time around and it was basically a bunch of people saying, "Well, if we did this, what might it cost us?" Now we have experience, there's been, you know, actual process where we went out to solicit proposals. Also, perhaps the competition will increase, maybe there'll be more people in this business going forward, but I think that, that in the future, you know, money available to us will more closely match our need.
Here's Dave, you had mentioned too in the past that part of our issue is that because of declining ridership, the statistics that the state used to judge how much funding we got was being reduced as well.
Right.
This could have hopefully started to improve that and maybe increase some of the other funding too?
Yes.
That's great news. And again, going with this company who is familiar with Jefferson and Lewis Counties, that they pretty well mirror the areas that we're really looking to serve most, so I'm hoping to see success. So, is there any other comments, anybody else? All right, not all in favor?
Hi.
Any votes? All right, thank you, thank you. All right, let's jump on to the next one.
The next one simply is authorization to award the contract to volunteer transportation center, the sole respondent to our RFP.
Dave, a motion? No?
Yeah.
Second? Roy? Any discussion? I think we talked about it pretty well. All right, all in favor? Any votes? Thank you, everyone. Exciting.
Thank you.
How quickly can they start, Dave, did they say?
We're just waiting on the final word from State Department of Transportation and we're involved on the 12th and we're hoping that they'll start as early as 1st of January.
Wonderful, excellent, wonderful. Okay, great. So, now we are on to, let's do department updates, we'll go with Dave and your folks that are here, anyone who's interested.
You guys all set?
Yeah. Want us to start with the website?
Whichever one you guys want to do first.
I'm excited about the website.
So, hopefully everyone's already seen the new site. We launched this a few weeks before Thanksgiving. It was a fairly, it's an interesting process with something like this because it's not like you just turn a switch and flip on a new website, even though it seems like that. There's some DNS stuff we have to do and Google is now still catching up to recognizing this as their current site, even though the URL is exactly the same. So, I just wanted to kind of preface it by saying that if you see some issues on Google when you're Googling certain departments or you see broken links, you can email a lot of them to us, but some of them will be, you know, fixed automatically next time Google updates its, its servers. So, which really should be soon, usually it takes two to four weeks, so. I know there were a lot of different pieces to the website and we presented so many times and on different features and we had all sorts of things in the RFP. Overall, the site is, you know, we designed the whole process, so it's a pretty agile approach. We have the ability to go back and make changes based on changing department needs, based on analytics that we can gather. It's really interesting to see walk through a process like this and you're meeting with different departments and, you know, everyone of course thinks their thing is so important, which everything is important to the people that it applies to, but we have to obviously create a priority list for the majority of the public. Why are they oriented to the site? What information do they need? What information do they need that maybe they don't even know we, we have? So, I'll kind of walk through, this is the homepage, you know, we've got our video back here. With, with this whole process, we've, we've found some other needs that we have, so we created a YouTube channel, which this video is hosted on. Chris Jones is one of the other admins on it. This is where all the committee videos are uploaded as well. And we're starting to move towards more of a centralized approach to that. So, that's been a, that's been a good part of the process. We have obviously control over a lot of these buttons. This is our main menu system up here. All the departments are more or less organized by committee here. And then government, this, this includes, you know, the municipalities directory, if you've seen that, real property, the core system, a lot of the legislative stuff. And then all of these menus are actually just services that we pulled out from the department menus. So, everything after these two main menu items are repeat services, but things that we felt maybe got buried a little bit in the shuffle, things that we knew from the analytics on our last website, people were really looking for information on. So, these are the most likely items that will be changing. And we also tried to find areas that we could change the verbiage a little in case someone had no idea where a certain service, what department it came from, you know, we could proclaim apply the county jobs. I mean, that takes you right to the civil service information on the HR page. So, I won't get too far in the weeds, but it's a, it's a fun menu to explore. And then we've got here our pull-up menu, this is kind of major county-wide type initiative things, things, you know, the Florida West, legalities around that, public legal notices, kind of county-wide services, a lot of them managed by public information. And then here's our current initiative sections. This is essentially our spotlighted news releases. These are things that don't necessarily have like an end date, you know, we would never flip to like our siren warnings here. It would be something more like, at the beginning of the year, we're going to post our, all the triple E dates for the spring, the ones that we know, or all the rabies clinics, something that's kind of like an ongoing initiative. Marine Sanctuary info is a good example. Right now, we have kind of some of our menu items here just to highlight them, get people kind of used to, for example, exploring all the departments. Again, this is, this is the news release section, basically, it's, it's kind of a blog format, which is nice. You can go in here and, and, you know, look at past ones. We can also put activation dates on all the news releases, which is really nice for, for our staff if we know something's going out, has to go on a Sunday, we can be a lot pickier on the times and the dates. We also have a subscribe feature here. I can go into the subscribe and alert feature a little bit more, but essentially you can go in here and just subscribe to this page. So, as a citizen, you can get, you can get updated to your email or text message on any of the news releases coming from the county. We go down here, this is our calendar. We're working on figuring this out. Basically, the departments that wanted to, could request to have calendars and then certain calendars would feed this master calendar. So, there's no real policy in place, not that there needs to be, but it's something we're keeping an eye on, I think, right now. We don't want to get the main calendar to get, you know, bogged down by a lot of, of random smaller events that just pertain to a really small demographic. But you can see all the calendars in here, obviously, if you go to one of them specifically, of a Bob's calendar here, I mean, he puts, you know, all of his crackdown information in here, all of his, all of those, what do you call the?
Victim.
Victim impact panels are all in here. So, again, these are things that don't feed to the main calendar. And then we go back down here, right now, this, this is our Instagram account actually for tourism and we recognized early on that we, we need ways to update content on our new website and we have to automate that process as much as we can because that, that can actually take an amazing amount of staff time to go in and be updating stuff every day. So, right now, we have a, you know, our tourism feed in here, which is something we manage as part of the tourism. Anyways, we're posting once a week, twice a week, maybe. And it's a nice way for people to kind of interact with some of our social media. We're posting once a week, twice a week, maybe, um and it's a nice way for people to kind of interact with some of our social media. We've talked a little bit about coming up with an Instagram account or whether it be a Facebook feed or something like that of the actual government. Um entities and maybe departments could submit things and we kind of tie it in with the news releases. It's not something we're, we're ready to do this second, but it's something we kind of recognize as, and maybe eventually this would be more of, you know. Posting a photo from uh rabies clinics or, you know, showing even just a spotlight on certain departments or employees kind of our own. Way to do that, um these are all the footer links, this is essentially just another way for us to to highlight certain things. Again, these things will change um as time goes, as we, as we realize certain pages are are really popular and that sort of thing, so. Um I can go into more details about features or?
Yeah, talk a little bit about uh some of the functionalities that were requested and how we uh address those, those departments' needs.
Yeah, um there were, there were a lot that we identified in the beginning and I'll, and I'll just say, again, this is an agile approach, so there are some that. We're currently working on um that aren't on this site, but I think we got the majority of the ones, certainly the important ones, um or the most requested ones. Um I'll go to like our payment portal, for example, um treasures, Office Brian Twist and and Kevin were really ones who worked on this, but essentially. Departments now have the option to use, this is through Express Pay, which is the same vendor we use for the um property taxes. They have this option to, you know, go through and they can pay for certain services for different um departments. And and this is the actual portal, it can be a little overwhelming, it shows everything, but if you go to, for example, um. Let's see. OFAI I think has, so if I go to um. So I go to the officer aging landing page, then this is their side menu, so their payment information is. Right here, so you can make a contribution and it'll just take you to this. Um so that's, you know, that's an example where basically departments, it's it's up to the individual department editors to uh recognize what their needs are and. Figure out how to use the pre-built tools to meet those needs, so. Um other examples might be our directory, I showed you that, I'll show you the municipalities um one for it, um.
So David is safe to say that with very few exceptions, most everything that you used to have to come to a county office to do, to pay for. You can now do through the website from your home.
Either you can do it now or you, the editors have the ability to make that happen. Um obviously, some editors have spent a lot more time and and recognized these things earlier, other ones we're, we're still working with as we go, but yes, all of those features. That are included in the RFP um have been delivered on, um so.
Well, I want to ask you real quick to join, Phil, is that, is your intention to uh ensure that all of those who can will? Or is it acceptable to have some that do not utilize the online portal?
I'd wanna talk, those that don't wanna use it, I'd wanna hear their reasons first before, instead of just taking a one-size-fits-all approach, or maybe other reasons why they don't want it.
Okay, sorry.
Sure.
Um and I mean, there's like even pistol permits, like you have to come in anyways, right? So there are certainly um some reasons and.
Could there be a help, um you know, thinking about audit requirements as far as handling the money, to have everything flow through here with that? Wondering if that might actually help us a little bit with some of our requirements, if you're gonna have less people actually handling money, then it might sometimes be a bit useful there too, so.
There's certain things that you have to have, you know, documentation, you don't wanna be uh have to send your social security card, your birth certificate. Over the internet to be able to make a transaction, so if it's just a straight, here's some five dollars to reserve, camp serbie for a day, no big deal. But if there's a lot of other confidential issues, probably best left doing it in person.
Yeah.
What about motor vehicle?
DMV?
Yeah.
Well, what about their?
They're totally different from this.
Their state system. It's a state.
That's a state system.
Yeah.
I mean, they can go on and see their section, of course, I mean, they're under the.
Yeah. I, I, I barely have anything about them.
Um yeah, I mean, here's the responsive, this, so this is basically, I'm showing you the mobile version of the website. And here's the tablet version of the site, uh there's the tablet version. So again, it's a really responsive site, it, it's designed um responsibly and with flexible coding, so essentially. You know, unless browsers dramatically change in the coming years, we'll be able to keep up with updates, so it's not like we're. Gonna have to go through some sort of huge um redesign anytime soon, um.
Previously, the way sites were designed, they were designed to appear on a desktop type computer. Then when the mobile devices became more popular, those sites couldn't adequately readjust. To give you a proper uh impression of the, what you're trying to see on, so now they do it the opposite way, they design it from uh mobile backwards. Yeah, and that's what Dave means when he says responsive, it responds to the type of device that you're dealing on.
And and there was an in-between phase too that some people might remember where um. Basically developers were taking the most common sizes, they were taking common screen sizes, they were creating multiple websites to represent that, but this is. Totally flexible in that it will even respond to the ch- the size of your actual monitor, you can see everything's kind of shifting um on us here. So again, this is the, this is the directory of um. For all the municipalities, um I'm gonna show you maybe a form here, so. Here's one we created just as kind of a practice, but also when we launched the site, we knew there's some different bugs, someone can go on here and they can say, I found a spelling mistake. They can put it in the link, they can uh, oh sorry, the link goes here, they can describe what it is, they put their name, they put their email, they tell us they're not a robot and they submit it. And that will go um right to whoever's email we want to, so, so every editor, department head editor has the ability to create forms like this. And this is actually a very simple one, we can create ones um that are more like applications, um so really. Again, it it is up to the editors to a certain extent how much they're gonna use it for their department, um but the tools are in place.
Talk about the citizen request form, is that?
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of this, these ones here, uh decision request form is a, is a kind of comprehensive form that we created where. Not all the, not all of the department editors wanted to list um an email address on the, on their website, so we created this, which. You know, allows citizens to contact any department and that's set up to, in most cases go to one of the administrative systems emails. Um you know, and we have a kind of more general information up here and basically they can contact. You know, the government can con- contact the department a- at any time of the night, at any time of day. Um and we have different hopes to to build this out further or build ones for individual departments. Um in the future, we have all those tools in place, this is a county uh map, this was actually, this is really uh Corey. Uh Matts should take all the credit for this one, he spent a lot of time on it, um they use their, the GIS uh software that they have. You can go in here and basically um, you know, see different county departments, uh get addresses, main uh. You know, main phone contact information, it takes the website, website link, actually just takes some of the section on this website. Um and we, you know, again, we're, we're figuring this out, um we have the polling locations, this is something we added at the request of. For elections, but we see this map as changing as, as time goes and we'll be adding things as departments want and possibly taking things away too if we find that. You know, it's not leading to, to citizens getting to the information they need.
Does this, does this map have a who's my legislator?
Um no, this one.
Cause that seems like.
Does, but Chris has been working on that.
Okay, cause I think he could do it through that GIS on the social stuff.
Well, and one of the things that we talked about briefly, you know, there was a lot of things that we could put on here, but. That particular topic, given that we're approaching the next decade and will be required to redraw um the legislative districts, it didn't make sense. Put a lot of effort into the maps that could change dramatically maybe in the next two years.
And Corey, Corey is aware though, and um he's, he has access to that data, so he has. We've talked a lot about that and one idea we had was a more of a reverse search instead of the map, so you can go in and just put in your address. And get information, it's something, I, I can't say, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna happen in the next couple of months, but it's definitely a discussion that's happening. On a weekly basis, so we do have this right now, it's built as a directory, this is um. I, I have to go in here obviously and fix those photos, but this is the actual uh, you know, my district's. Contact information.
And we will be taking the photos um in January, so that all the photo styles are consistent and fit in that format. Um currently, the ones that were on the old website were different sizes and some of them were different types of files and different um heroes, so. So um that's one of those things that we'll be doing in January.
Yeah.
Black or white? Hopefully we'll be touching up some of the legislators' photos.
Yes, yes, touch-ups please.
I can use much help as possible, that's great, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, uh just a, is there anything else specifically Dave you wanna highlight or you gotta know, we have a couple of questions here.
Well, there are um two microsites with this as well, so there's the health microsite and then there is. Uh Parks and Rec, so I won't go into detail with those ones, but definitely check them out, it really is, all it is, is we took those two departments. And we created um, i- i- it's all housed in the same website, so it's, when we say microsite is all it is, it's, it's a different website. It, it looks and feels like different websites, but in terms of the coding and the way it functions behind the scenes, it's the same site. So we took those two departments and and basically gave them a little bit uh more robust um options here and you can see the parks one. And that was based primarily on the recommendations of the vendor, but also the editors and needs that they had in place for those two departments. They were willing to take on something, so they've done a really good job um for both of those departments, so you can, you can check out those sites as well.
There's the expectation that we're going to do something like that with additional, or is it planned just to leave it at those two at this point?
It, there's.
I think like the real property is the one in my head, I sticks up the most, do they change the look of the real property site at all?
Well, real property also has their um. Uh no, the short answer is no, but real property also does have their, like their partial viewer stuff here, which this is hosted again on their. On their own, um on their own hosting, where they host all the real property maps, so there's changed less than others, actually. The, we have the ability to do it to a certain extent, I mean, at some point the vendors are gonna come back and be like, are you guys trying to make websites for everyone? And I think, I mean, to that point, from a usage standpoint, it doesn't make sense either, I mean, we could create. A website for every single department, but then where's the main county website, that wouldn't make total sense, I mean, I can show you, um. There are some landing pages that kind of look special, like Veterans has one where, you know, they have a little bit of a separate look, but they still have the same menu up here. Um and the thing that we, we could look into moving forward, I have to work with Greg on that script palette, but. Pointing a URL to these specific pages so that veterans could promote a URL like a Swego County dot veterans dot com, so they had their own.
So the way to help with setup is help dot Swego.
Yeah.
That's great, um well, I, I have just a couple of quick questions and I'm a little running around here, um the biggest thing that, you know, we had talked about right off the bat with this was the ability to keep updating. Right, what's the responsibility that would be, and so, you know, if we leave it on every single department, things may end up out of date. So what is the plan for that, is it all going through you folks or is it still gonna be a little bit on, I mean, it's health required open bank there, is it's real property?
Right. I think, I mean, there are certain things that we've identified, content pieces that are gonna be updated more regularly. And most of them are public information's responsibility ultimately, news releases, that's on us. Um there's also an alert feature um that will come up, that's on us primarily, um. Any major things uh on the homepage, that's on us, um but every department has an editor, or in some cases, two or three editors. Um and when it comes to updating content about programs and things like that, that's on that, cause we, we don't even know when that changes. Um in terms of process, every editor has a login, they can go in currently and basically make the change and it'll update right away. We're hoping to move at uh Mitch Mitchell's uh. Uh it, it um advised us to basically move towards a two-person publishing process, which is. You know, they would go in, they would be able to make any changes and then it would, an email would come to someone in public information, one of the trained admins. Who's not only trained in the public information, but also like the style guides and that piece of things, and basically have a second set of eyes on it, they would ultimately publish it. We talked also about uh, you know, once a quarter or having a few different like, you know, website drawings where the editors can come in. And we can sit down with some of the people who are uh training the admins on the website, basically leaves uh Janet and I. And and kind of update their pages, and I don't know if we would do that, if they're just gonna come here or if we would just have that and not go, kind of workshops.
Great, and then the contract that we originally signed, is that, that offers some continual update or on-demand needs, is that correct? Or are we essentially, once we finish this thing goes live and we're good, are they done?
No, they're not done.
They, they, they offer tax, I mean, they have twenty-four hour tax support, that was part of the RFP, um. In terms of updating it, again, the software is not gonna change that dramatically, it's a proprietary system as far as CMS. So if they make a global change, then we receive that as well, um if we.
But unlike some other proprietary systems, if we leave, we take everything with us, others uh that um provided proposals to us. If we left, we lost everything, cause it was their, their proprietary software. And then these guys also, at the end of four years, will come in and do a whole uh revamp of the site.
And that was, that was with what we've already contracted, paid them, that's not the additional costs, yeah, great, that's great. Uh then lastly, real quick, my last question was tourism page, is that integrated into this or is that still standalone?
That's a standalone, we have a tourism department that's represented here, which is more or less contact information and then some links back to our tourism website. Um David wanted to say more about.
Um it, it's newer than the government website that we just refreshed, um but it's still been around a while and um. The uh platform that it's on uh could be better, so um. If we find the funding uh sometime in the near future, uh it would be well spent to put some time and money into that one as well. I have a, beginning of every year, I have a department head meeting where it'd be helpful. For you to talk to all the department heads at that meeting about responsibilities and the methods for updating, and so I want the department heads to know what tool they have at their disposal. And what the responsibilities and their, what their responsibilities and their editors are.
Yeah, I think so, and and I, and to that point, one thing we've run into, and and it's not intentional by any means. But certain editors don't have that vision that the department had in the beginning.
Right.
So we, we find that where the editors are going and they're trying to get the projects done, rather than maybe implement something that's really cutting edge.
Right.
And so I think that could do that happen.
Right.
So it's good.
That's great. Uh Rock, uh Dave, why don't we uh bring the tourism um into this, into this site? Why is it separate? Why, why would it remain separate if we got this into proprietary stuff?
Um well, we could, I think if we did, it would be, we'd take the same approach we did with health and youth, it'd be its own website because it's so. Much more information than any of the other departments uh that you see featured here. Um and that's really the biggest issue is the bio. Um, and that's really the biggest issue is the volume of information that's in there, um, and, and portraying that properly.
So is it, it was excluded right from the get-go?
Uh, no, I mean, there's a tourism department in here, um, and we have the highlights of our website in there. But, um, we didn't try to migrate everything over. One of the reasons was, um, within the contract, we were limited to a specific number of pages that we could move over into this new site. And we reached that limit. Um, I think there was, how many pages did we start with here? Like six thousand or something?
I think our past website had over three and we were limited to about two. And when we looked at the analytics, we figured there were probably about a thousand pages that no one even was still.
Yeah.
So that's what that came down to. When we hit that limit, that, that threshold, um, you know, we chose not to migrate some of them because, based on which departments decided that they basically wanted to start over anyways.
So under departments, tourism is under community development? Not listed as economic development?
Right.
So you gotta dig a little bit more than, like.
Well, there's a visitor information, um, section two.
Yeah, it's on, on, I think.
It's under visitors?
So that takes you right to the tourism.
Yeah. The other thing to keep in mind is initially when the tourism site was developed, it was part of the county government site. But there was a decision made to develop a standalone site maybe ten or fifteen years ago. Because research shows that when consumers are looking for visitor information, um, they might not put the same credibility into a, one that's obviously a government site than, um, a different standalone site. So that, that was part of, um, and the amount of data in there is.
It, I mean, there's, there's some technical reasons too. I mean, when it goes back to, like we know with I Love New York, we've talked about working with some of their systems, for example. Uh, but also just from an SEO standpoint, if we have a tourism site, even if it was a microsite, the Google is gonna, Google will know that. Even if we have its own URL, Google will know that it's a microsite. And it will promote it in a different sort of way. So it would be, it would be a way for us to accidentally, easily entangle government information with promotion information. Again, that goes back to your point where keeping them separate on, on a technical standpoint is gonna make more sense too. We're gonna have more options. Um, the needs are, are pretty genuine, I believe.
Right.
Um, one of the things you mentioned about like calendars is that we don't have a policy, um, updating. Do we have any written policies on how this is, you know, on responsibilities, liabilities, et cetera? And here's kinda where I'm going, if, um, we've got the requests up there. So now I'm, you know, whatever jobless citizen out there, and I send in a request. I get some information back, say on real property, for example. You have real policy on, hey, when does that request have to be processed? How many, how long? If I ask a question in particular, and then it takes all in the direction of, if I ask a question about my taxes, and, you know, the deadline is the first I will pay. I send in a request on the twenty-fifth, I don't matter if that, so can we do any policies?
Not a massive specific example, it'd be the same as if somebody called in, we try to answer citizens' requests as soon as possible.
Yeah.
But in, in terms of a policy for updating the calendars and the, and the websites, right now the county does have a computer use policy that all employees sign, uh, that, um, you know, places rules and regulations on the use of social media and on their computers. But I hang a lot of things that come out of bringing this to the two departments as a uniform policy on certain, how certain things are updated and how the information is to, to flow and then by who, who has authorizations. That's something that we do need to develop.
Probably, I would think it'd probably be a really good idea, cause right now it's probably being handled, it's kind of the anecdotal with the editors, et cetera. And when we get into liabilities, we bring our users responsible.
Right, very similar to what, you know, what county terminals recommending with this two-person verification. We don't wanna run into a situation where, you know, we publish a copyrighted image, things like that.
So that's a great point, Brad, we should look more in the future.
I think we can even take a look at disclaimer on that request form to say, uh, Oswego County appreciates your, uh, interest in whatever. Uh, we'll do our best to respond to you within, uh, whatever reasonable timeframe and.
The editors are on vacation. Yeah, whatever, so those are a bunch of the microshot, but I think that would be a good policy.
Yeah, depending on the, the volume of, of these citizen requests. I mean, if it's even one a day, it wouldn't be too much for one centralized location to at least view them, maybe somewhere in your office. I don't know where it would make sense in your office. Somebody would just see, you know, a request was sent to the treasurer's or a certain request was sent to real property. Um, again, you're not, I think we wanna micromanage every department, but it would be helpful because if they come back and say, hey, we could go, I asked, this is the first you're hearing about it and now it's too late, wouldn't be a bad idea to have something set up that way, so. It's good. Uh, any other questions?
Yeah, you touched on most of what I was thinking, but you talk about multiple editors, so I'm thinking, you know, the security around that, personnel changes and all that kinda, so how, how do you control the security? And follow up to that is the, as far as input, the consistency, you started to touch on that a little bit. But, you know, we're looking for a consistent look instead of.
Yeah.
You, you, you know, this is impressive to start with. But, you know, you go here and you go a couple of layers down.
Yeah, no, that's, that's really good point. Lisa and I have talked, um, she's one of the other admins. So, so you touched on the, the hierarchy, yes, like we have our developers behind the scenes, this, this is essentially the bad nerd. Um, and then myself and Greg Powell have quite a bit of, uh, ability with the actual code and the DNS, obviously. So, um, but then there are admins, which is essentially right now, you know, four people. Uh, it's myself, Lisa Gray, Public Information, and then we have an admin for each of the two microsites. Um, and then under that are all the editors. So again, once we move to the two-person publishing, um, the editors aren't even gonna have the ability to really update anything in real time. It's gonna have to go through one of those admins. Uh, or actually it doesn't even have to go through an admin, it can go to an email and someone can click on it, like without even being logged in to see those changes. Um, but editors.
To, to, uh, that's a question. Um, their, the editors' authority to, um, address things like the look and feel is pretty limited. Their, their, their content, like Beth Jones retires and Sue Smith takes her place, they change the name. Somebody gets a new phone number, they change the phone number. When they get a, a document about an upcoming event, they post it up there, but they, they can't get to the backend really to, to do some of the things that you're concerned about.
And if we run up into something that doesn't seem appropriate, or it's, uh, it's not according to the format or template that we should be using, we can correct it on that, and it's going to, let them know we're right. Um, we have a style guide that, um, we developed in Public Information, both for, um, sentence structure and grammar and punctuation and things like that, but also, um, tips for writing for the web anyway. Um, you know, to make it more personal, or when a sentence is shorter, and tips to keep in mind for photos and things like that. So there's a lot of, um, interaction in a way back and forth between the individual department page editors and then, um, the public information people that are watching.
And, and, and you're right, absolutely in that point, that once you get a few layers down, um, this, what we're trying to do to fix that right now is, uh, Jan and Kelly are both going through page by page and editing. So it's a huge task. Um, the editors were supposed to, if they followed the process we recommended, they're supposed to submit all of their pages before they're even trained. We had three departments submit. So now we're kinda playing catch-up and basically they've had, um, some opportunity to go in and change some things, and there are definitely pages that are not formatted how we want to. So we're doing that page by page. Um, Lisa and I have talked about also at least going to the main landing page for every department in the next three to four months and really helping them, you know, use some of the templates, basically. Uh, and then to touch on the security piece, um, one thing we included in our RFP that was really important, obviously, you know, we're, we're going with all the different, um, compliance, ADA compliance. Uh, if all those things are obviously in place, there's no real personal information or data that's being stored behind the scenes, um, which is helpful because, you know, in the case of a hack, we, we back this up every single day or every other day. So basically is what we can do, we pull the plug on the website, it shuts down, and we can plug in the day before. So we never, like, there's no real liability when it comes to that, um, which is, which is pretty nice. I mean, having that set up, and then our only big concern is obviously network, um, issues, so.
That's great. Um, I mean, I, I do want to say though, thank you for going through and doing these manually, but with the amount of time that's passed, I mean, we, we're going on almost, what, we're two years now, to have departments that haven't even returned the information you requested. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous. I don't understand why that would be two years later and not have any information. Now, two years later, you remain, you guys can start two years ago doing this, so.
Well, we did on purpose this.
That seems crazy to me.
Thank you.
But anyway, is there any, um, anything else, I mean, I do wanna kinda jump on, this is great information. I mean, so excited to see this. I know many of us have been just chomping at the bit to, to look at this, and it is, it's not disappointing at all. You guys did an amazing job. Thank you very much for all the work you put into this. Uh, again, it looks absolutely incredible. I know it's been a huge asset to the folks that we're looking at. I love that you guys have the ability to continue to tailor it when we start to see things that you've done better, or not better, but different. Um, so again, uh, thank you very much for that. Um, if I could, is there any other questions on the website before we move on? If not, Dave, do you wanna, I got a folksy idea here and I've been waiting a while.
Yeah.
Perfect, all right. Um, thank you very much, you guys, we really appreciate that.
John, David.
I want to welcome, uh, we've got Mick Nelly, Vice Chair of the IDA, and Kevin Carecoli, Returning to the IDA. What up, guys?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
As I told him, uh, this morning, I'm, uh, or we, I guess, are Mike Treadwell today.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, Mike, uh, came down with a severe case of influenza, like you read about, like bedridden and COVID and quarantine, so.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, had nothing to do with the Georgia football game either, cause they won. And, uh, I don't think Nick or I are, are prepared to, uh, give a presentation in a, in a Georgia accent, but if you really wanna be, you can.
Good news is, uh, both of you are known to speak faster than.
A little bit, a little bit. Um, so, uh, on the agenda today is the, the annual report for the IDA. This is, uh, this is an annual report. The agency's fiscal year is August one, uh, to July thirty-one. So in this case, we're, we're talking August one of two thousand eighteen to July thirty-one of nineteen. Um, and, uh, again, Mick and I are here to, to field questions, answer them. Um, primarily wanna go through the, the highlights of this report and then, uh, open it up for discussion. But during the course of this, if there are any questions, by all means, fire away. Um, we're not intending to go page by page through this, uh, uh, report. And does everyone have it? I, I do have extra copies, yeah.
Got it online.
Yeah, I, I.
I, okay, is it a little bit right here? Is it already, okay.
Sometimes it's better to have it in the physical, but if you have them, I can.
Okay, I, I didn't realize, well, one right, it's right here, so I'm all set.
You've got it open too?
Yeah.
Um, but just a, a, a real quick refresher on, uh, what, uh, County of Oswego Industrial Development Agency is. Public benefit corporation, it's established by New York State law. Um, and it's, uh, under the general municipal law, it's got its own, own section, uh, nine eleven B. You, you went online and looked that up, it, it's specifically, uh, the, the legislation that was adopted back in the, uh, early seventies that established the agency as a, uh, as a quasi-form of government, it's a public benefit corporation, as I said. So there's certain rights and, and obligations that the agency has. Very similar to, to what, uh, you know, municipal government, uh, um, can do in many respects. And frankly, uh, the, the agency's authority, uh, is derived from county legislature. Its members are appointed by the, by the legislature. So, uh, do have a, a fully constituted board, um, we meet on a monthly basis, uh, and as needed. Uh, and say during that fiscal year, um, we did meet every single month, and I think like a couple of times, uh, a couple of times a month as, as circumstances dictated. Um, the real, um, the real meat of this, and what we wanted to emphasize at least is, um, uh, I think it starts on page nine of the report. It's really it's to the heart of, of what we do, the project assistance that, that, uh, the agency offers to, uh, businesses and, and industries, uh, strictly in Oswego County. There were, in that fiscal year, a total of twenty-nine projects that the agency assisted in some form or another, whether it was, uh, through a, a pilot payment, what we call a straight lease transaction, uh, or, uh, providing some type of, of, um, money, uh, in the form of a, a lease, uh, arrangement. We, we don't provide loans, well, we do, uh, we don't provide loans out of the, um, uh, out of the pilot, uh, Economic Development Fund anymore. Uh, the state kinda put a, um, a kibosh to that. But we do offer, uh, various loans through HUD, federally, um, regulated, uh, loan pool. Uh, we do a micro enterprise, uh, loan pool for small businesses. And, and then we have, uh, the EDF, the Pilot EDF, um, where we can do lease financing, uh, for eligible companies. That's primarily for equipment purchases and things of that nature. But when you look at all of those, uh, twenty-nine projects, uh, the total assistance, whether it was a pilot agreement or some type of, of loan or leasing arrangement, uh, totaled forty-one point seven million dollars, I'm using round numbers. I, I think what is, uh, equally impressive for, for such a small agency in our county is the, the return, or what that represents in additional capital investment by the companies. So for that forty-one point seven million dollars, there was a total of, uh, a hundred and sixteen point seven million dollars in, in, in capital, uh, project expenditure. So these are companies, uh, industries that are, are investing or reinvesting, uh, in themselves, but certainly to the benefit of, of the community. That, you know, just roughly is a, a sixty-five percent return, so for every dollar that, that, you look at it that way, every dollar that the IDA, uh, supports, there's six dollars and fifty cents of additional investment by, by, uh, business uh, that, uh, that, uh, goes through these total project costs. So out of the twenty-nine projects, um, there were, uh, new jobs created of, uh, three hundred and forty-four. There were retained jobs of a hundred and ninety-three, and economic development, you know, it's, and everyone focuses on the new jobs created, which is great, but, uh, any, any economic developer would tell you that the, the jobs retained are, are just as important in many cases, even more important than the jobs that are created. So, um, those are the numbers that were generated. And I think also important to point out in terms of the location of these projects, uh, there were eleven different municipalities impacted. Uh, there were projects in, in eleven of our twenty-two towns and, and villages and cities, primarily the city of Oswego. And that's not really without mistake if we consider the, the DRI, the ten million dollar, um, downtown revitalization initiative monies that came in. And, uh, many, I think actually all of those projects received some form of assistance from the, from the IDA. Uh, short of the ones for, from the, the city of Oswego with the pocket park, that was a wholly funded and financed through the city of Oswego. But all of the other projects that are DRI-related, that are from private development, uh, have a component of IDA involvement in it. So, and in that case, uh, you know, that ten million dollars, um, really translated into about seventy-five plus or minus million dollars. plus or minus, million dollars of additional economic capital investment by these developers. So, you could argue that many of these would not have occurred, notwithstanding the $10 million from, from the state of New York, but a equally critical component of virtually all of those projects. And I don't think the Fulton DRI experience is going to be any different. Most of those projects probably, well, they need it. You could argue whether they would do it or not, but they certainly needed the assistance of the IDA to make those margins work for them. On page, I'm sorry.
One question on, fourth one on Maple Assisted Living Facility. Plus, the financial assistance was higher than the project cost by half a million dollars.
Yeah, so that was, the Maples is the former Nishad Nursing Home in the city of Fulton. This is a project that came out of a foreclosure proceeding. The bank took it over and provided it to a developer who is also partnering with Oswego Health to undertake this, undertake this project.
My question is, we've said you finance more than the cost of the project. What would you say?
Yeah. Right, and I'm not sure what, yeah, that doesn't look right to me. It doesn't look right. If we can get back to that one in particular, I do know that.
It could be a typo.
Yeah.
Well, Kevin, is that, does that take into account, is that taking into account the long-term savings from the pilot or not?
It does.
Because you could see more additional, you know, assistance than the cost of the project, if you take that into account, but I wasn't sure.
I don't think the long-term savings from the pilot would be that significant that it would drive it up that high, right? Because on that building, the pilot is on any additional improvement, not on the whole thing. So, whatever the thing was assessed at, if I remember right, is that the way it's almost set up, Kevin?
I think in this case, there were, there will be set payments. It's, I believe it's a 20, it's a deviation. I believe it was a 25-year pilot payment with, with set payments that would then increase in increments of, I want to say it was somewhere near 2% or 5% every five years. They were relatively low in comparison to, you know, to a project of this size. But again, with the nature of the project, being healthcare, a needed service in the city of Fulton, that was, that was some of the decision-making that went into the, to the agency board, ingrained in it. But I'll get back to the committee on that specifically.
Is that one too, where they, it was formerly a nonprofit, and currently is, so I mean, the assessment, I think, kind of being a little bit.
Yeah.
The assessment was out of whack, on the building, because nobody's paying that kind of anyways, nobody cares what the assessment was. So, it's part of the issue, I think, but I don't, I don't think.
It just looks like $20,000, like somewhere in that, the cost of that project.
Yeah, and. Let's, let's go back to that one in particular.
Morse?
Yes, I'd like to also bring this up, being partnered with the Medical Center in Fulton. This project here is very helpful to the community. Once again, if you look at Seneca Hill and you look at all these projects, and one of them, of course, our friend Jack, probably recently I was able to be involved with, just the fact that families can be in the area and around and partnered with all these different things is a tremendous asset. When you go there, you see this, the family situation. We're very fortunate in this county to have these kind of projects. And one in Fulton was a project that had gone down the drain, so to speak, and now it's going to be revived to help not only that project, but also the medical center at Fulton can use that help too, with the people that are professional people involved, such as doctors, nurses, et cetera, to expand that medical situation up there too.
And Morse, that's a great point. A lot of times we do get hung up on how many new jobs, how many retained jobs and things like that. But the, I mean, as we all saw when, shot one out and all those people lost their jobs, and it was pretty devastating for city of Fulton and the residents there. These are the types of projects, sometimes you can't put the job count on. You see something like this, and it really, it starts to turn it around. We're starting to see that momentum gain, especially with the other awards that are mandated and stuff. That's a good point.
Yeah, and that question, though, is viable.
Absolutely.
Interesting question to ask.
Doesn't make sense.
Good catch there.
But I think it has something to do with the fact that that's not upfront money. It's not like they're paying that money today, tomorrow. Sometimes it's just the total assistance, which can be taken over a number of years, I'm assuming, so it could be more.
That, and I know that the financing and development structure of that loan, that the bank is working with the developer in essentially, assuming a lot of the, you know, the past debt of the prior owner. The four million is essentially additional construction and renovation costs. Might be a little bit of a, that $600,000 difference might be what the bank is essentially flowing to the developer over time. But let me get some more information.
Yeah, rather than start to just.
Top of page 10, I just wanted to point out, this is, this is a particular note, because this is the Pilot EDF, these are the various loans that have been provided by the agency from the 10% portion of the county tax that, for any pilot agreement that is entered into, the county's portion, 10% of that is maintained by the agency and placed into this Pilot EDF Economic Development Fund to be utilized. Now, again, previously it was for loans, now it's for lease program for equipment purchases and the like. In addition to that, it's for any legal economic development needs that the IDA legally can pay. So, you know, land acquisition, different things, all those lines. Land acquisition, infrastructure improvements, things of that, that are complementary to frankly what the county does, but also what a particular business might need to enhance their, you know, their, their business opportunities. So, in this case, there were seven different loans. These are all paid in full. I just want you to highlight that these are essentially those county dollars at work assisting various projects throughout the county. These are the ones that are paid in full at this point in time. And then equally, I want to point out right below that, the bad debt loan leases that we have, fortunately, were, are very minimal. We've worked pretty diligently to try to keep the tabs on who's, who's late and who's in trouble, and try to work with them. These three in particular, despite our efforts, we were unable to recapture all of the money that was loaned out. In the two cases, the MPE, that's the micro enterprise loans. Then those are funds that are, come from federal sources. And I mean, I hate to say this as a supporter of economic development, but by their very nature, about half of those statistically are doomed to fail. And the lending source knows that, the federal government. But, but we still have an obligation to make them and work with them. These are folks that usually, they are truly start, small, usually startup businesses. They're required to take a program and be trained on, on how to start up a business and run them. And then we give them really kind of seed money. Usually those loans are $25,000. The max I think you can do is $50,000. They can be as low as $10,000. These are, so we had two that failed. You know, one of them, we, we worked with both, but one we captured a little more than half, and the other one we, we lost a little more than half. And then the last one was one of the old pilot loans that we had dating back to 2002. We continued to work with them, but just, they folded up and we had to write it off.
Did they all go bankrupt?
In the case of, Zink did go bankrupt. I believe Riverdew did go bankrupt. Eagle Phone, I don't know that they did, but as a trade-off, what the IDA generally does with these financing arrangements, we receive guarantees, personal guarantees in many cases. Or if there's a holding company, an operating company, we'll get the guarantee of, of all of the legal entities, including the person, right? So, in the case of Eagle Phone, we actually obtained not only the personal guarantee of the principles, but we also took a mortgage on some personal property that they owned. And although this is a bad debt, we were able to obtain the personal property. It's located out in the town of, town of Oswego. And it's a developable property. It's got, you know, it's got probably, I think the assessed value is somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000. So, we're calling this a bad debt, but, you know, we were able to at least get something out of that.
So, that you're asked every now?
It is, yeah, and it's actually on our, it's on our report on the last page. Yeah, it is, North Star Boulevard. So then, the last, last part of page 10 is our distribution of pilot payments by general municipal law, New York State law. The IDA is responsible when we issue a pilot. We're responsible for collecting it and then distributing it to the taxing jurisdictions. And that's the jurisdictions in which the project is located. So, if it's in the city of Fulton, Fulton gets their cut, the county gets their cut, and the Fulton School District, assuming it's in Fulton School District portion, gets their cut. You know, any other place is no different.
So, you send the payments, you send the payments directly?
We send the payments, and we're obligated to send those payments within 30 days after receipt of those payments. And so, we do that, and then the, you know, that, the final portion, that 10% of the county share that the, that the IDA maintains, it represents in the whole grand scheme of things, 2.5% of the whole pie, if you will, which, again, in this fiscal year just ending last July represented just, just a little over $200,000. So, with that $200,000, it's in a dedicated fund, we're able to make those, those smaller loans and kind of repurpose that money for various projects that have come along. And as Nick pointed out, not just for specific projects, but, but land acquisition or infrastructure improvements that further help attract, maintain, and retain businesses.
Is that about the amount that you normally had in there?
So, that's the, that is the, that's the amount that was, was pulled from the fiscal year. It goes into an account. That account.
The account adds up, which is $6 million in the account, okay? But a little over $4 million of that money is allocated to specific projects already that haven't finished yet. For example, there's $250,000 in that account that's allocated towards our portion of the sewer project for the airport industrial park. There's half a million dollars in that account that's allocated towards land acquisition for the Phoenix Industrial Park. There's, you know, we've got money in there allocated towards paid material management. We're going to do a lease program with them. We're planning to do a lease program with them on some equipment that they're planning to put in that will help them help Novellus moving forward.
Those monies were used, passed for the Economic Advancement Plan, the agency's allocation, to fund that report that's now being, you know, in the implementation stage. Just tonight, we were appearing before the City of Fulton Common Council to put a purchase offering on three acres of land in Nestle Park. And that would be for a manufacturing startup facility. We allocated $2 million of that, to that particular facility. Again, we don't have a specific prospect at the moment, but can't tell you how many times people have inquired, people, businesses, industries have inquired about a specific size of building that they're just, they just don't make, you know? 30, 40,000 square foot buildings, there just aren't any in this county that are ready-made for a business or an industry to come in to set up shop. We have something like that, so we're kind of targeting that and call it, if you build it, they will come mentality to some extent. But we have a high degree of confidence that, that, you know, we get that, we build it, and we'll be able to fill it.
I guess I was just wondering, how much of that money is unallocated and how much do you carry?
Two point, a little under 2.5 million. I think as of the end of this fiscal year, there was 2.3 million that was not allocated. Anything that's not allocated over $2.5 million would go back to the county.
And that's by agreement, well, by resolution of the county legislature that's been established. And just historically, just to keep this in perspective, back in the early 2000s and the 1990s, the IDA, when this, when this fund was established, the IDA was retaining 50% of the county's share of the pilot payments. And then that was dialed back. The IDA provided the county, I think it was in 2008, built 2007, 2008, with over two consecutive years, budget process of about a million dollars. And then that 50% outation was reduced to the 10%, which is what is now expending for more than a decade.
How much money do we get?
Sorry?
Just wondering how much of that money comes back to the county then? I mean, have we been receiving anything over?
We have to review the records. I don't know that it's happened recently.
I have it.
Yeah, what determines those percentages?
Both, those are, those are, those are determined by the tax rates in each jurisdiction. So, you know, the tax rate in Stryba is different from the tax rate in Richland, for instance. And so, it's calculated every year. We have staff at the agency that takes each pilot payment. You know what the pilot payment amount is going to be, and they calculate it. They determine what the county's share, the school district's share, and the.
It's different these.
Yeah, it, it varies because, again, every, everyone's rate is slightly different.
The same pro-rata amounts that would have been paid to each of the agencies, for each of the institutions, based on what would have been with Fulton. So, if you paid 100% of your tax and 50% of that went to the school district, 25% went to the town, and 25% went to the county, that's how we, whatever the, using round numbers, whatever the numbers actually would have been, the numbers that are used for distribution.
But those are calculated on an annual basis. The IDA staff works directly with, you know, each municipal. Usually it's the assessor or the tax collector to get those, to verify the figures are correct. And then they make the calculations. And keep in mind that every, every pilot payment is, not everyone, but many of them are different. So, the county established a uniform tax exempt policy, again, back in the 90s. And just very, very generally, there are two categories. There are 10-year pilot for non-manufacturing projects and a 20-year pilot for manufacturing projects. And they each have different exemption schedules. So, for instance, in a 10-year pilot, the exemption starts at 60% for two years, 50% the next two years, and then it goes 40, 30, 10, 20, 10, down to nothing over that 10-year. The, the manufacturing pilot exemption platform is a little more aggressive. It's 75% for five years, then it goes to 60 for another five years. And then it, it goes in basically two-year increments, 50, 40, 30, 10, or 20, 10. So, so those are the two main exemption that could be granted. But then there, the law, general municipal law, again, it's not Oswego County law, it's not an IDA policy. It's New York State law allows for deviations. It's New York State law allows for deviations from those pilot schedules. And the company has to justify the reason for the deviation. There are a host of those. And then, it's also subject to a public hearing, right? And notice to the each affected tax jurisdiction. So the county gets notice, the school district that the project's locating gets notice, the town or village and/or village gets that notice as well. Public hearing, that it chance to be heard. Ultimately, it's the agency's decision whether to grant that deviation or not. And I can tell you, this is not a, you know, I'm not a member, I'm the legal counsel. I don't participate, I don't have a vote, but I can tell you, they're not, it's not a yes group. There's healthy debate. I think Tim and Nick can certainly attest to it, they've been to several meetings, and of course Morris. You know, it's not a rubber stamp group. They do the due diligence, they listen, and, you know, we, ultimately, again, from my perspective, the projects become better with that level of scrutiny, so.
And if there is feedback from any of the towns or school districts or anything like that, that they've got issues with any of them, our ears are open, and we listen to whatever they have to say and just work with one of the towns that's doing one of these sewer projects, and there was a lot of back and forth on it. And because the town got involved, it ended up being a much, it was, ended up working out real well for everybody in the end, but everybody was more happy than they would have been.
You know, it's almost an expectation that, especially in New York State, I mean, to attract businesses, it's one of the first things on their plate to discuss. And when you're competing is, you're attracting people that are competing for a place to go. It is a little discouraging, especially in good economic times, to get something that's really gonna carry their weight right out of your shoe.
It's definitely a double-edged sword, because you, you know, they all, they all say, well, you know, we just can't make the project work without it.
I know I've been involved on that side.
And we, you know, I've sat in meetings where the agencies called the developers on that and said, "Really? You know, you can do better than this?" And...
Well, that's good that there's likely to be that.
There is, it's not, it's not a rubber stamp, right? And I certainly invite anyone to those meetings, and I guess come January, you'll be able to see them.
Let me ask one question. Would you just explain the Price Chopper situation that we, which was a project?
Sure. Yeah, so, and actually, it's a great segue, because on page 12 is really the last highlight I wanted to show you, and that's really the property that's owned by the agency. Again, and this is in this fiscal year. About halfway down the former Price Chopper building is on that list. The project was, or this, this is, was owned by the port of Oswego. We were, the agency was looking for to create a incubator center and a light manufacturing center, and then include the offices of Operations Oswego and the IDA into it. It had received feasibility studies, made determination that this was, this was the project, and submitted CFA applications, waiting for monies to come in to actually build this project, which we projected to be somewhere in the neighborhood of at least four to five million dollars. While that was going on, we were approached by Oswego Hospital and Oswego Health saying, "We really would like to see this as the next behavioral health center." And, you know, "Would you be willing to sell it?" And so, the agency thought about it, kicked it around back and forth, negotiated the price, and ultimately sold it to Oswego Health. And they obviously broke ground on the VHS over there, which, you know, again, is, will now free up space at the, at Bunner Street that can be utilized for, you know, county and its various agencies. So, we saw that as a being economic development stewards. We were kind of, you know, practicing what we preached, even though it was, kind of, set us on a different course for what our plans were for that facility. We saw better and greater good in, you know, working with Oswego Health and the county to develop that center. That's going to infuse 100-plus employees into downtown Oswego that all have to take a lunch break and do some shopping, and the spin-off effect, we always look at that as economic developers, what the spin-off effect of a project is, and that's got a high degree of additional spin-off development opportunities. So, it's not part of the DRI. It was actually one...
Part of why we didn't do it.
Yeah, and it was one that the City of Oswego put in its plan, but at the end of the day, the state decided not to fund that as part of the downtown revitalization project. In the meantime, Oswego Hospital came to us and said, "Hey, any chance? We sold it, we didn't take a haircut, we sold it for what we paid for it." And it's, you know, it's a good project. So now, we're looking at something else. We've actually, so we reallocated that money to the Nestle acquisition, and that's, again, tonight, the building of the facility. Not just the acquisition, it won't be that much longer.
The acquisition and the building.
All right, that's great information. Now, Dave, do you have a question?
Yeah, Governor Nick, I see a wide range of projects here, from lawn mowing and childcare up to manufacturing like Budamaki. How onerous is the process for like a small business person to come in and try to get some help?
You know, I, we don't think it's hugely onerous. We have a very good staff. Kevin LaMontaigne is our CFO. He comes from the shoulder. Highly intelligent numbers guy. I only can tell you that it's, and I've heard from a lot of these folks, the small businesses that close, we end up, I end up closing those loans for these folks, and I can't tell you how many times to say it was a pleasure specifically dealing with Kevin on these projects. I mean, it requires an application, that application's online. Virtually everything about the agency's online, and we're subject to the same requirements, policies, and all the rest of it that the county government is subject to. You fill out the application, there's credit checks. A lot of times, if it's a micro enterprise loan, we're working with Small Business Development Center, graduates of that program automatically qualify for assistance. Still have to go through the due diligence, but, you know, specifically how onerous is it? I don't think it's...
For a mom-and-pop business, it's not?
I don't think it's onerous, I think it's help to them.
And how long probably does a typical, like, project take that's not, you're not talking millions of dollars?
You're talking about making a diner out of a county report.
Ten to $25,000.
Yeah, I mean, again, some of it depends on how, what they're using it for. If it's part of their construction and things of that nature, it may take a little bit more time. But from the date of approval to the date of closing, in many cases, you know, it can be 30 to 60 days.
The reason, if I can, Mr. Chairman, the reason I ask is, under the Ready Program that Governor instituted earlier this year, there's a separate business category for marinas and other private business entities as opposed to the municipal, by the way. And Governor's program people decided that there needed to be a 5% local match in there, and that that would come from the municipality where the business is located. Well, there's legal issues with a government gifting to a private business, but there's been a suggestion that perhaps the IDA could participate to help those folks through maybe a sales tax exemption as they're buying their materials for like sheet piling along the shoreline or something like that. I don't know that anybody's spoken to you guys about that yet, but they're trying to move these Ready Projects quickly to prevent damage in the future. And most of these, if people were to approach you, would be in the, they wouldn't exceed $10,000 is what they're looking for, the 5% match. They're only eligible for up to $200,000. And I'm just wondering if it's a lot of work for them to go through that process.
To go through the process of getting sales tax exemption, I think would be...
Well, yeah, I would agree.
You know, a micro enterprise loan is different, but to do that would be...
Well, the loan would help them because it would be considered a match from a local government entity.
As the, as the project requirements currently exist, that it would be, it wouldn't be cost-effective for a person to get $10,000 worth of sales tax exemption.
That's the answer I was looking for.
How was?
Trying to make the case to Governor's people that this 5% match just isn't cost-effective, practical, or even legal.
So let me just, very briefly, in as tidy a nutshell as I can put it, tell you, follow, go through that process. The legal mechanism that allows the agency to provide those exemption benefits, whether it's sales tax, a mortgage tax, or a real property tax exemption, is that the IDA must have some ownership interest in the property. It can be done through an actual acquisition of the property. The IDA would acquire it from the developer and then lease it back to the developer. That creates the legal connection for the IDA to issue those benefits, because the law says the IDA must have an interest in the property. Gone away from the sale and leaseback to a lease-leaseback. So, the developer, property owner, still maintains legal control of the property, but it leases the property to the IDA. And in the same transaction, two separate documents, one's an agency lease and one's a company lease. The company leases the property to the agency, and then the agency leases it back to the company. And that creates the legal mechanism for those exemption benefits to be provided, okay? So, you can imagine, on a $10,000 deal, I mean, and there's a lot of, it's not just two documents, there's a whole degree of underwriting.
But on a $10,000 deal, you're talking $800 in exemption?
It is, it is.
You're not working through all that.
No, they're, so their maximum grant could be $200,000, and they have to have a 5% local government contribution in there. So, that's, on the 200 would be $10,000. And everybody along the Lake Ontario shoreline's struggling, how do we make this happen? And state didn't look at that very carefully, so one of the things that they threw out there was, well, the IDA could help maybe through sales tax exemptions. And obviously, this person who suggested that probably wasn't very familiar with the process.
So this is a great, great discussion. I know, I think Mike Tredwell is on, is it part of that committee? I believe they're ready committee, so maybe that's something that, again, this is great information. We're in the hole a little bit on the end of it here, we've got another meeting starting here shortly. So, I do want to thank you for your Pilot for Dummies information. I love that, it gave me a lot of extra information, so specifically of myself there. But I think Luke Roy has a question as well.
Well, since we have everybody here, I don't see anything about economic development on the Oswego County website. I don't see, I can't find it connected to the IDA whatsoever. So, I think that's something we need to address.
They listed as an agency, entirely?
If it is, it probably would be under CPTP.
I can't find it. I've been looking for it.
That's actually a really good point that brings us from, we don't have a lot of time today to get back to it, but one of the things that we discussed through the strategic planning initiative that we've done through our economic grant process was to have a better one-stop shop and to, that would ultimately be linked back in, I would assume, pretty primarily from our website and others like that. And that was one of the recommendations that came out of the Center, Center State CEO meetings. So, it is something we should keep on the radar, and if we don't have that, maybe it's something we'll put as an external link. But I think that, we understand that that's an issue.
Well, I mean, if we've got visitors, it could be under visitors, it could be under departments, it could be under both. Could be, you know, "I want to start a business in Oswego County," and all of the line. So they meant connect to the, you know, the appropriate connections.
Yeah, that was identified.
Whether that's connection to the outside, website for them or not, doesn't matter. Long we get there.
Yeah, that portal was identified as a, we need something where it's one-stop shop for people coming in, people who are already in looking to experience.
I also can't find any jobs here listed, county jobs.
Employment community?
Yeah, so, there's a couple.
There's two sections of jobs. There's the, there's the actual...
There's exams and recruiters. But there's not a...
And then there's...
Okay, so that's the actual list.
Current job openings is one of the categories there. And then there's also, I think we called it, under "I want to," well, there's the civil service opportunities, but there's one that links back to employment and training as well as...
Well, so, you know, under "I want to," "I want to start a business in Oswego County, and I want to get a job in Oswego County," both of those should be really easy to get to.
That's a good point. I'll, Phil, go ahead.
Yeah, can you give me a list of the departments that haven't responded even after my most recent directive? I want to see where they are, because not every department needs a website, just a contact page or something. The internal service departments, if that's who it is, then I'm not gonna...
Yeah, but again, if we are, if we're using your staff to update them, then they must believe it's necessary. Let me quickly frank Baron back, sorry.
So I just, I just want to back up on your public hearings. I would just like to know the logic behind having time in the public hearings. You know, it just boggles my mind, why we have the time when we have it.
We have it nine o'clock in the morning?
Yeah. I mean, to have a public hearing at a time when the public is all working or in such, that's my only... One of the key things, I'm sorry I didn't get here, you know, earlier, but I just, I...
My, the question's been asked before, and I've asked Mike why that was the case. His response to me is that he had tried to do them in the evenings, and nobody came in the evenings either. So, the letters are sent out to all the municipalities and taxing authorities and whatnot ahead of time. Have plenty of opportunity to respond. Those people are available to come during the nine o'clock in the morning, and it, there is, the meetings are all posted in the paper and somehow online and in the paper with it posted. And people do have the opportunity to respond in a letter format or any other format prior to the meeting. And we very rarely receive any response whatsoever from these. There's, I've been on the IDA board for five or six years now, and Mike gives us a report of every meeting, and he had some in the beginning that were scheduled in the evenings. And the number, the number of people that actually show up at these meetings is very small. So, I don't know...
Well, I can understand what you're saying. My point is, is that until I came to, you know, on the legislature, I didn't know you had public hearings, okay? And no matter how many papers you put it in, how many people in here get a paper anymore? There aren't that many, okay? And how many people look, you know, at the business section? Not that many. That's, what I'm getting at is that the knowledge and the, you know, the information has to get out there some way, some way, shape, or form.
So how are people gonna know about it more if we have it in the evening than if we have it in the morning?
There has to be, there has to be some way, that's something that somebody, you know, after me is gonna have to come up with an idea where and how they're going to get these meetings publicized, because there are meetings that we have in the evening that are, you know, public hearings. We do get more people to them, but they're, you know, the case of them is it has to be through social media in order for, you know, any meetings to get out there. I mean, meetings in Fulton, the only time they come to them is if it's on social media somewhere. I mean, meetings in Fulton, the only time they come to them is if it's on social media somewhere. Not in the newspaper, because they advertise in the paper and nothing ever happens. But somebody puts it on social media, and all of a sudden, they want to know what's going on. And they come to the meetings. Do they speak? Not all of them, but they come to the meetings.
That, I don't, yeah, I think that's a worthy comment. And not only, I guess, response to that would be that the state law has to catch up with modern times. Because, you know, we're almost damned if we do, damned if we don't, right? We've got to follow the requirements of the general municipal law, which say must be published in the local paper of general circulation in the jurisdiction in which the project is located, right?
And I understand that. And I know that that's what has to happen. But what I'm saying is, there's things that you have to do, and then there's things that go above and beyond that to get the word out. That's all I'm saying. You know, I don't really have anything against the, you know, pilot agreements, stuff like that, other than the length of them and the restructuring of them. But I don't want to get in that because we're almost done with the meeting.
As far as accessibility. As, again, starting in January, the IDA meetings will be all published and they'll be stored online. So there will be better access.
Video.
There'll be better access starting then. The, you know, the Oswego County website, I believe, does also track upcoming meetings. I believe that's, or at least maybe past ones, but maybe that would be a discussion we could have. But again, when we get to this one-stop shop, I think that that is going to be a helpful piece for us to do. So Frank, thank you. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay.
We're done. We got a meeting coming.
All right, Nick, go ahead.
I'd just like to say that if there's anything that any of you specifically at, any legislator, but specifically the people that are on this committee, if there's anything you've got a question about regarding the IDA and how we operate or what we do, why we made the decision, anything like that, Tim has my number, and he's got Gary's number. And we'd be happy to answer those questions. So feel free, call me, maybe won't answer right that second, but we'll get back to you. And please, I don't want there to be some, and Gary, I know, doesn't want there to be some kind of feel like there's an arms-length thing there that you can't talk to us and there's, or that there's anything we're trying to hide. So if there's anything you have a question about, please, call us.
Yeah, I want to thank you guys too. And obviously, we had, this maybe has been wonderful, the information you brought. I think you explained in a way that I could understand with probably others here as well. You know, last year you came and presented the full legislature as well. So I do appreciate.
I'm willing to bring that again.
Yeah, I appreciate all the effort you put in. Just to draw attention to the, you know, those on this board. If you see the organizational structure, you know, as Nick said, they truly do work for this committee and work for the legislature. And there should not be any sort of a feeling that there's not an open discussion. So I do want to hear that. Dave, go ahead.
And then except for things that would be covered under their executive sessions, your meetings are open.
They're all open. Dave, did you want, thank you, folks. I appreciate that very much. Dave, did you want to close out with anything? And you did not get the chance to cover that needs to be covered. I know we have CFA's results will be coming out here in the next probably week or two. That's exciting.
Should be by mid-December, yeah. Jan?
Yeah.
You want to wait?
Yeah, we had a marketing presentation that we can post to the next meeting. Just highlights of our summer campaigns and media coverage and things like that. I did want to add, though, the public hearings are, there's a section on the county website that the departments that are hosting, that are responsible for posting public hearings are submitting information to that. And that is something that we've been able to post together. We did not have a special designated thought for that on the site.
Was that something we would potentially be able to list the pilot one? Or does it have to be specifically within, you know, our departments?
If it's something that we're, I don't know if the county, it's equivalent legislature normally posts those. I mean, I would think that we pretty anyway.
Yeah, it's in the newspaper.
Public and legal notices.
I would think that because the IDA operates at the pleasure of the legislature, basically, their, that connection is enough to consider their appropriate to post on our site.
Yeah.
As opposed to, you know, a library that we might help with a little bit of money each year. This is more like an authorized agency of the county.
And we do maintain our own separate website with all of that information on it accessible.
We can incorporate it into that.
Yeah, I think to Roy's point, maybe just a, all you probably need is a hyperlink and shoot, right over to our. It's very, pretty comprehensive. Not as impressive as the county's, but a pretty comprehensive website that we've developed too.
It is on there. It was on the old site, and I'm sure it's on there somewhere. I'm just not sure exactly where it ended up.
I just want to thank Kevin. As you see our attorney, he lives with us.
With you or Bart?
He's with us to start our meetings and the whole mess. His directions and so on have been fabulous for years. To be guided like that, we need that. We have to have that representation.
All right, well, thank you all.
You know, I've been on, I can't even remember how long, operations for the county. And I, as Morris and as everybody on this committee, are just huge advocates for development. I mean, you know, to build like that, our tax base. So please, in no way feel we ask questions. I mean, it's, we all do other things, so it's, when you see these things and you're clarifying, it isn't, please don't perceive it as negative. It's just informative in case, once we know and we can answer questions for other people.
Knowledge is power.
Well, you got, and I'll say it, constantly, of course, it's always been asked. We'd rather, we'd rather answer and clarify than have you believe something that maybe isn't accurate. So, all right, if there's nothing else, I will look for the appropriate motion.
I'll move.